Ms. Harris and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal everlasting God, our Father, we come as empty vessels before a full fountain with thanksgiving in our hearts, allowing us to see another year and another day. But we recognize, Lord God, that with you we can do all things and without you, we can do nothing. So we ask your blessings among city leadership and the citizens of this great city that they continue to be, Lord God, what you would have them to be, and they will continue to work on one accord for the betterment of this whole city. Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And forgive us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen, and thank God. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Harris is from our Mobile Fire Rescue Department. Roll call, President, Vice President Manzi, Councilmember Richardson, Councilmember Small, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Rich, Councilmember Gregory. Statement of rules.
We're certainly glad to have each and every one of you. Want to start out by saying Happy New Year, and to let you know what our rules are relative to speaking before the council. We ask first that you turn off all electronic devices. Any person desiring to speak before the council is asked to contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday prior to that Tuesday that you'd like to speak before 2:00 PM, and that's on items that are non-agenda items. If you're here to speak concerning an agenda item or you've already made arrangements, you have five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. We ask that when you address the council that there be no personal address of any individual council member. All statements need to be made. To me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. Lastly, we ask that there be no undue applause and/or public outcry during the course of this meeting. Thank you very much.
Approval of minutes of December 19th. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a great New Year's celebration. For those that braved the cold, I would say, as Councilman Richardson said, the bitter cold on New Year's Eve. We had a, we had the, there were no faint of heart attendees at the moon pie drop on New Year's Eve. You know, over the holidays, we were very fortunate to have had a very successful Dollar General Bowl, as well as the moon pie drop, and those things don't just happen. There are a lot of people engaged to make it happen, from our cleanup crews to those that organized the events themselves. And so, I'm just tremendously grateful for all the hard work that goes into making those events happen. So thanks to everyone that was involved. I see a couple of the representatives of our hotel association, managers of our hotels downtown in the audience, and I know that they are grateful for the number of rooms that were filled on New Year's Eve and over the holidays. So again, thanks to everybody that has something to do with the moon pie drop and the Dollar General Bowl, and just generally keeping the city running during that week between Christmas and New Year's. I want to let everyone know that the City Mobile is taking legal action against the opiate companies responsible for dumping millions of dollars' worth of prescription opiates into our community. Last week, we joined a growing list of cities across America in filing litigation against the pharmaceutical drug manufacturers and wholesale drug distributors that created the opiate epidemic. As many of you know, homes have been broken into and families torn apart by this epidemic, which has claimed victims from all walks of life. Pharmaceutical drug manufacturers and wholesale drug distributors failed in their legal obligation to notify the DEA of suspicious orders even as the number of hills flooring into our city rose and rose. I'm sure this will be an ongoing process. I like a lot of the legal actions of this scale, but we felt it was our responsibility to engage with other cities in this litigation. On another note, for those whose trash was not picked up on Christmas Day, the next scheduled trash, not garbage, but trash pickup will be January 8th. For those who missed trash pickup on New Year's Day, the makeup date will be January 6th. I would like to encourage everybody that still may have any of their boxes left over from Christmas to please recycle them, and also to recycle your Christmas trees. The Christmas tree drop-off locations are Lake Drive at Tricentennial Park, Spring Hill Recreation Center, Baumhauer Park, Dog River Park, Public Safety Memorial Park, Medal of Honor Park, and Langen Park. So please bring us your Christmas trees. Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, City Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
So move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Public hearing. Today is the public hearing to rezon property at 8:12, 8:16, 8:18, 8:20, and 8:20 to Hockum Avenue, north side of Hockum Avenue, 50 feet west of Euclid Avenue, and from R1 and B3 to B3.
Is there anyone present that would like to offer any commentary relative to the said property in this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Ann Pond?
I don't see Dr. Pond.
Ordinances held. Ordinances held over. 88051, deemed property located at 258 North Hamilton Street, not now needed for public or municipal purposes, and authorizing the sale thereof to Historic Mobile. So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
CIP resolutions held over. 21-81, are there any objections? I could take these together?
No.
Okay. 21-816 and 817, authorizing contracts with Sawgrass Consulting for 2018 CIP citywide resurfacing projects, and contract with Gulf Coast Underground for 2017 CIP miscellaneous drainage repairs, pipelining.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
21-824, authorized contract with Delta Flooring for Tomlinville Public Library flooring replacement.
So move. Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions held over. 09819, we allocate monies from capital project grant match parks recreation to Parks and Recreation Professional and Technical for grant match.
So move. Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
09820, we allocate monies from Executive Director of Engineering and Development Professional and Technical account to Parks and Recreation System Improvement Plan.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
09821, we allocate monies from District 5 discretionary account to capital improvement, fund traffic engineering, capital project street traffic improvements for 10 decorative street posts to mount security cameras that will be installed by Project Shield.
So move.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
21-822, authorized contract of Iker Construction Corporation for Lab People Stadium concessions, roll-up window replacement, phase one.
So move.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time. 64001.
By council rules, this resolution will lay off for one week.
Consent resolution's being introduced for the first time. 03010 through 60003.
Motion for suspension of rules for many consideration of resolution 03010 through 21003.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03010, we appoint Stuart Davis to the Mobile Tennis Center Advisory Board. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
37001 recommend, 37001 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for Tusker's Tavern on Horsman Road.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to see if, is the applicant present? If you've got a moment, I'd just like to talk to you after the meeting, if that's okay. I wish you good luck, but I would like to talk to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
58002, authorized removal of Wies Group 1573.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
60003, determine certain inaugural events in expenditure service at a public purpose and approve payment.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time. 13011 through 21004.
Motion for suspension of rules for many consideration of resolution 13011 through 21004.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
13011, authorized change order number two with Iker Construction Corporation for Harmon Park Playground Improvements, and 21004, authorized contract of Harris Contracting Services for Harmon Recreation Center Electrical Improvements.
So move. Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? I just want to comment briefly on both of these items. They are in alignment with the playground amenities that we're adding there in the Harmon, at the Harmon Thomas Recreational Center. The community is excited. The contractor is already deployed. A lot of the work is already being completed, and so this is going to be a first-class playground for the citizens and for the young people in that area. So I'm proud to see both of these agenda items on today's agenda. Any further discussion? If not, let us vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time. 09005 through 21012.
Said resolutions will lay off for one week by council rules.
Call for public hearings. 41008, call for public hearing to consider an amendment to Chapter 50 of the Mobile City Code, public improvements to add a new article for entitled "Mobile Tourism Improvement District" relating to the creation of a self-help business improvement district to provide supplemental services within the district, scheduled January 23rd. 41009, call for public hearing to approve the application of Christopher Jenkins Doing Business as Superior Cap Service for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxicab service scheduled January 16th. So move. Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Passes. We'll start with Councilman Davis.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to welcome all the citizens of Mobile to 2018. Much progress has been made over the last several years, and I look forward to that progress going forward into 2018 and beyond. I would also like to commend not only the cities, public safety, and other first responders, but also the public works personnel, the entire administration, the city staff, for a marvelous, safe New Year's Eve celebration, the moon pie drop, and also commend the citizens of Mobile. It's not everyone, not every place where you can put that many people together at one time, and everybody remained safe and sound. And also commend the citizens of Mobile that showed up for enduring the adverse weather. It was a little chilly by Mobile standards, and those who turned out showed great fortitude in supporting this unique celebration for the City Mobile. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. We're now here for Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. Thank you very much. I would like to start off by wishing all of the citizens in the City Mobile, but especially those in District 1, Happy New Years. I would say that if you make plans for this, this New Year's, New Year, that you'll have something to work with, but if you don't make any plans, you've already planned to fail. Because if you don't have a plan, then you don't have a goal to go by. And if it is to be it, it's up to me. If we were looking for a greater year, this year than last year, then we have to get out there and go to work for it. I would like to, I would like to commend Matt Stimson and Councilmember John Wiggins for hanging in there with us in the bitter, bone-chilling, cold weather on New Year's Eve. All the events went off as scheduled. The weather man predicted with the wind effect, it was somewhere near 17 in the downtown area because we have the lake effect. Someone this morning thought I said the liquor effect. No, we had the lake effect, the wind coming off the water that made it exceedingly cold downtown. It didn't stop anything. All the events went off as we scheduled them to be. Lots of people couldn't take the cold weather, but many of them did. So when I went out to hear George Clinton, I could hardly get up to the stage. People were packed out out there. They were bound and determined to see what they came downtown to see. And I want to commend all of the people from the city, within the area, from out of town. I met people from all over this country that came here for the moon pie drop. So it was a great event. I would also like to, I think, my go and spark with the Riverview and the Ball House for being the host for the citizens who came here from far in there, having room for them. When I got ready to leave, or when I got ready to go to my room around 1:00, I came down to the lobby of the Ball House, and in the lobby, you had food, had a food venue set up in the lobby. They had all manner of sandwiches. I thought that was just outstanding for those people who wanted something to eat. They were lined up getting food from the lobby of the hotel. I thought that was outstanding. Like to commend all of our citizens for staying with us. It was a very successful event, and I would like to, I think, David, I would like to thank you for helping us, you and your staff, for helping us get the word out. The word was out throughout the country that we were putting the ball drop on. Now, let me just say that we, we have a reputation. When they talk about major events on New Year's Eve night, we're gonna be in the mix. We're, we're not trying to prove ourselves. We have already proven what we can do and what this venue is, and we just need, see, we had a foggy night, a rainy night, and then we had a record-breaking, bone-chilling, cold night. We just want a regular night, just a regular night, moon shining. Let me say something about the moon. At 12:00, the full moon stood still over the Bank Trust Building, shining light on the moon pie, letting us know that we were in order. And I put that on Facebook where the moon was directly above the moon pie, came to visit us at 12:00. The real moon came to visit the moon pie. And with that, Mr. Vice President, I'll close out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. I thought you might have skipped Mr. Small. I just didn't want to leave him out.
Glad he did, yeah.
Must be in order.
That was a hard act to follow.
As always, I will keep this short. I, I can't help but comment on what I've heard in the last couple of days, and that is, I'm through. I've already taken up all my Christmas stuff, and it's packed away. That's over. Christmas is not over. If you want to, proof of that, come by my house. It's all still lit up, and we're still moving the manger, the nativity scene, around as the wise men make their way to the nativity. It is, it is still a day to be celebrated. I've always practiced, there's 12 days of Christmas. We have a lot to be thankful for here in the city. I was thrilled to be with, with Fred on that New Year's Eve night. What a great turnout and a lot of fun. We, I thought Fred, when he started his comments, was gonna say something like, if you haven't made plans for next New Year's Eve, because I think that we ought to all make plans to be at home in Mobile, downtown, enjoying the moon drop. I'll certainly be there, and thanks to all that were involved in that event. That's all. Mr. Vice President, thank you.
Now, Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. Greetings to the citizens of District 3. What a holiday we have celebrated in the past couple of weeks, especially in District 3. We started off with a parade with 17,000 plus going up, dumping on a parkway, to conclude with a big old Christmas celebration at Pillins Miller School where we had collected gifts for the elderly. We had supplied several nursing homes in the community with gifts for the elderly, and we also went out to the residents, and residents that do not have any one. We was able to share and give love to them on Christmas also. I'd like to thank all the volunteers from, you know, the Christmas party that we had, to bringing out gifts to even the ones that even participated in the parade. We thank you so much from, from the bottom of my heart, because it wasn't for you, it was not being, it would not have been successful. And again, that was a very Merry Christmas to District 3. Now, we on to a Happy New Year, and we have some great things, you know, in the plans and the words, just for you, District 3. One thing that we do, we need your help also. If you see something, say something. If you see someone breaking the law, please call a non-emergency police department number, especially if it's not a definite dying emergency. You know, if you see overgrown grass, blighted house, you know, pick up the phone and dial 311. Again, that's the only way that we will be able to take back our community like it should be. I have committed, as I have always committed, for my New Year's resolution to continue to make District 3 a better place to live, work, and play in. So again, District 3, I need your help. I am committed to work with the administration and also with you, District 3, in order to make our community, our district, the best in Mobile. And again, if you see anything that is out of place, if you see something, say something. Again, if it's a crime, 2087211. Again, if it's a overgrown lot, overgrown grass, blighted house, please dial 311. And together, we can make things better. And remember that District 3 is a place where things are happening. Happy New Year. Thank you.
President. Vice President Manzi.
Mrs. Gregory? Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I too want to wish everyone a very happy 2018. We look forward to this year ahead of many great accomplishments, I'm sure. So we look forward to all working together. And thanks to everybody for a wonderful New Year's Eve event. Fred, I saw you out there shivering, and I know it was a wonderful event, and lots of folks enjoyed hearing the wonderful music, and I think it was a lot of something good out there. Anyway, just a couple of announcements. The Mobile Police Department was planning to have their chili cook-off this weekend at Cathedral Square, but it has been postponed until January 20th. We just got an email about that. So if you were planning to go out there, please just postpone for a couple of weeks. It's January 20th. We also just got an email about, hard to believe, Mardi Gras, first parade is the 26th. So get ready for Mardi Gras, the first parade here in Mobile. Conde Cavaliers on the 26th. And I'm planning for my first district meeting of 2018. It will be at the Vision Center, which is just off Forest Hill Drive. It will be mid-February. We haven't decided on the official date yet, so as soon as we get that, I'll make the announcement, and of course, we'll send postcards out with details about the meeting and who all will be there as invited speakers. So thank you, and again, just welcome to 2018. We look forward to being with you throughout the year. I'm sure great things are ahead for all of us. Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. I want to start my announcements by saying to, I'm sorry, pardon me. It wasn't intentional. Mrs. Rich?
That's okay. Thank you.
I am so sorry.
Not a problem at all. I too would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. And I know we did not meet last week, so I hope that everyone's Christmas holiday was wonderful and that you built lots of family memories. I also want to remind the people in District 6 not to place their tree in the Bruno's old parking lot. There are a bunch of trees there, and I guess that owner of that complex will have to remove them. I don't know if the city would help at all, since you're supposed to bring them to Medal of Honor Park if you're out in West Mobile. So please make note of that. It's nice that you're recycling, but not at the old Bruno's, even though that was a location for many, many years. Also, I'd like to say that we're all excited about Alabama winning last night. It was quite a handy game. They did great, and that next week at this time, we will know that they are, we'll think positive, our national champions. So all you enthusiasts with your Roll Tide Roll, keep up the good message and wish them well, and hope that they bring that crystal trophy. I think it's still crystal. I'm not sure about that. It used to be. I think someone once broke it, didn't it? Is it, so they've changed it? Do we know what it is? What type of trophy it is?
It appears to be a bronze or brass.
Okay. Okay, so no longer crystal, but bring that trophy back. It's great for the state, and I wish everyone the best of luck with that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Make certain, I'm not, okay, all right. I want to say Happy New Year to each and every one of you, most especially the great citizens of District 2. This should be an action-packed year where you will continue to see improvements across the length and breadth, breadth of our district. A lot of great things planned, a lot of positive improvements in the pipeline, and I think this year will be, again, another transformative year for our district. Glad to see it. We're all blessed to have been able to cross this threshold of 2018, and I hope we utilize it, take it as another opportunity to make ourselves, our community, our city, our state, and on up as best that we can. On yesterday, I had an opportunity to bring greetings at the 155th anniversary of the Emancipation Proclamation. It was held at the Emanuel Seventh Day Adventist Church, pastor by Dr. Harold Goodlow, and the speaker was Reverend Clinton McFarlane. He did a superb job. It was attended very well, and I just want to applaud the Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance and their president, Reverend Charlotte Green, for such a wonderful and impactful program. On Monday, January the 8th, we'll meet at the corner of Glenon Avenue to honor the earlier renamed Glenon Avenue in honor of Dr. Yvonne Kennedy. Ms. Thelma Thrash has kind of been leading this effort. She's planned a great program, and we will meet there at 12:00. I believe there'll be a, some semblance of a motorcade from Bishop to Glenon Avenue starting at twelve, and then we will begin the program hopefully at about twelve thirty, but it's certainly an honor befitting Dr. Kennedy, and we look forward to participating with that on January the eighth, two thousand eighteen at twelve o'clock. I want to acknowledge the passing of Nick Lachus's mother. I had an opportunity to go to dinner with him, his wife, and his mother about a year and a half ago. Very bright personality. She did not treat me as a stranger, suffered with an autoimmune disease recently, and passed over the last couple of weeks. He's established a GoFundMe account to contribute toward a scholarship fund in our memory, and I certainly want to just publicly acknowledge her passing and just let Nick know and his wife know and the family that we do and we will continue to keep them in our prayers. Any further announcements from the council? Any announcements from the administration? Do I hear a motion?
So move. Second.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned.